East Long Meadow School Building Committee recommends to the town council that the project be bonded up to a maximum of 30 years. This was approved by unanimous vote yesterday afternoon. So just wanted to get that out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, I have to just give a point of information. The vote included two abstentions. Mr., our town manager and myself abstained from that vote because we felt we, me, would be required to vote tonight, so we abstained.
But you are completely correct.
Yes, but all of the other members, for record, voted.
Should have said with no opposition.
Yeah, there was no opposition, correct.
Thank you. So that said, and I know there's been a lot of discussion around this recently. As the committee was beginning to get a better understanding of what the project budget was going to look like, and in the interest of being able to provide information to the community, who had been very outspoken about, yeah, this is all terrific, it looks great, how much? We needed to be able to do some calculations to be able to give them some of that information so that they could make decisions appropriately. In consulting with, both formally and informally, with bond counsel, with financial advisors, with our professional team, which between them, I don't know how many hundred school projects they've done, but it's pretty significant. We came to the conclusion that 30-year bond would provide the least financial burden to the community. It would spread that burden across, you know, the longer time. As a function of municipal bonding, you typically want to try to bind the useful life of the asset to the bond duration. Now, we're building a 50- to 75-year school, so that's not allowable by law. But it was the thinking that, you know, the more we can disperse this amongst the community so that, you know, in year 20, you know, in 20 years and one month, a family that moves in with their children who are making use of this asset also have some skin in the game. And they're not riding on the backs of the people who happen to live here a little bit longer, a little bit earlier. So as we were going through it, it seemed like that was the most effective way to communicate that information. So that's what we did. So we used the 30-year model when we were putting together the financial analysis. In discussions with the community during public forums and otherwise, we were always very careful to say, you know, this is based on 30 years. It's also based on projections that we're making right now. This project, should it be approved, you won't be bonding it for another three years, probably. So it seemed to us that, you know, let's keep our options open. There will be plenty of time if there's, if it's financially advantageous to do a shorter term or to do a mixed term, there might be multiple offerings. We can figure all that out at the appropriate interval. But that appropriate interval is not now. We don't even have an approved project yet. So that was the thinking of the committee. And like I said, it was, there was a lot of robust conversation about it, and I know that some of you were there for some of those conversations. And there was very much, I mean, the underlying priority for the four years that I've been involved is how do we get the best possible facility for the students while obtaining it at the lowest, most reasonable price point? And that's tough. We all know that we're in an inflationary environment. We all know that rates have gone crazy. You know, all you have to do is read the paper. But as we're looking down the road and we're saying, all right, I don't have a crystal ball, neither does the committee, neither does anyone involved in this. I don't know what rates are going to look like in three years, but I would certainly want to have the flexibility to adapt to them as necessary to get the best deal we could for the town. And that's why we felt strongly that, you know, making a commitment right now to an absolute duration, it didn't feel like there was a lot of upside. Matter of fact, it felt like there was no upside. And all we're doing is putting some handcuffs on ourselves. Why would we do that? So that was our thinking, both then and now. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have. Just as an aside, I work in a lot of municipalities across the Commonwealth professionally. I'm not a bond expert, but I've been part of a lot of bond teams. And in discussions with these people who do it every day, day after day, they felt strongly, there is no reason to do this. You're already kept at 30 years by statute. So you don't, you don't have an option beyond that. And to whittle that back ourselves at this point seemed premature at best. So that's how we were seeing it, and that's why we're making the recommendation that we did. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Kathy?
Just as a clarification, I know I heard this information yesterday, but for the benefit of our listening audience and our live audience, I hear you say that we don't have to call for a bond for close to three years from now.
Yes.
So as it relates to the taxpayer opening his or her mail and getting a tax bill, is it fair to say that that impact, whatever it is going to be, isn't going to show up for close to four years from now?
I think that will be determined by the financing structure that the town chooses to put in place. I can tell you from experience, many times school projects, particularly projects as large as ours, they make use of what's known as a bond anticipatory note, which enables you to basically make interest-only payments while the project is being built. Similar to commercial construction, right? You have a construction loan, you build your project, you put your permanent financing in place, and then you move on. That would be analogous to what we're looking at, I suspect. Right, experience would certainly inform our team that this is how it's usually done. Because why wouldn't you want to take advantage of that? And also ease into the impact that you described. We don't want somebody opening the mail one day and saying, oh my goodness, what is this?
What is this coming?
Right, so if the more we can ramp that so that people understand what's coming, now again, this is all obviously subject to the project being approved. But let's assume that it is. You've got a bunch of really bright people on your team, right? Your financial advisor and your bond counsel are the top in the state. I can tell you that with certainty. So when those guys get together, guys and girls, and figure out, well, you know what? Here are options, and obviously in concert with our finance director, they're going to be able to say, here's a few options, here's the pros and cons. We recommend this for these reasons. Now, obviously, that's the town's decision. But wouldn't it be great to have a couple of options that, you know, let's see what makes the most sense for us? How can we do this? Right, maybe you're bonding it in chunks, right? Maybe there's an initial tranche of $25 million to get you through the second year of construction. And then maybe, you know, there's infinite ways it can be set up. And it just seemed as though leaving ourselves the flexibility to make total use of that would be in our best interest. Questions?
I would just, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Kathy.
Just as a follow-up to the spirit of what Mr. Christensen is saying.
He's not Christensen.
Christensen. There is a guy by the name of Christensen. I have served on this council since its inception, and on numerous occasions, it has, was necessary to engage the opinion and the services of Hilltop Securities to guide us in our financing, and their professionalism and knowledge and reputation is impeccable. And if that is a comfort for the audience, then I think it's important for me to say that. We're getting sound, sound advice from real professionals.
They suggested the 30.
They are, well, they can't guide you. I mean, they can't, it's kind of like when you go out for a bid, you need to get at least three. They tell you what the industry standard is of sorts. I'm sort of putting some words in their mouth, but they speak to the statute that MSBA allows a ceiling of 30 years for a school or a municipal bond. They say that in their experience for a project this size, and this is outrageous money, we would all agree with that, but that is what a school, a high school building costs. If we were on the Cape and we were in Pica Town on the Cape and they were building a new high school, those figures would look pretty much like ours. Now, it's their, you know, every town's capacity to pay, but their experience is that with a municipal project of this magnitude, it's most prudent to take advantage of a 30-year. But they won't, they, I understand, clear to say, you can finance it however you wish.
Right, if I could, counselor, just to add to that, you know, you have plenty of options, just for argument, let's say that you bonded it for 30 years, and now we're off to the races, we're in year four, rates are starting to plummet. We have an option to refinance this thing. We have an option to break it apart into different pieces or bring those pieces back together into one piece. There's a lot of different things you can do.
Counselor, that it's typically in nine or 10 years before you can do that. So you will have already paid, well, you would like to think you've paid a third on the bond, but in essence, because of the interest and all.
Yeah, I mean, depending how, depending what happens, right?
Nine or 10-year before you can look to do a refinance. And that's, that was from Hilltop. John, you had a question?
Well, first, I wanted to thank you for your service and for the folks that are here for doing all the work, because it's been a long time coming, and definitely it's kind of thankless sometimes. So just want to put that out there.
Sure, counselor, all the work is back there. I'm just the guy sitting.
Well, but for everybody involved and for you kind of spearheading at least the committee portion. I was curious to get your opinion. You know, we're talking about bonds and numbers and a lot of finances tonight, and I'm curious to see what has been your, what you have heard, has the folks that have shown skepticism to the project, has it solely been cost? Has it been, they're worried about the design? I'm curious to see if it's just the cost, because obviously the cost is large. But is there anything else that people have raised out of concern? In your opinion?
That's an interesting question, counselor. I would offer, by and large, most of the, most of the interest around the project is financial. And that, that's the one impact that everyone in the community will bear in some way, shape, or form, right? You know, there've been a smattering of questions about architecture and other design decisions, and why do we have so many trees, and why did you put the ball field here, and so on and so forth. There's time to address all those. Like, if one of those was a showstopper for somebody, you know, they're going to be designing for another year and plus or minus. But one of the things that did come up that I, that I found puzzling is there seems to be a fair amount of the community who seem to think that we're not being above board with the information that we have. So by way of example, there was a facility study done years ago. That study was updated when we applied in 19 and were ultimately accepted. That study has been reconducted in a deeper fashion so that we could, with some degree of credibility, be able to speak to, you know, a lot of people seem to think, just fix it, it'll be okay, right? Just, you know, fix the leaky pipes and the outlets that don't work and things along those lines. The challenge with that is, you know, when we put together criteria that we hand outside professional estimators to say, look, if we were to fix it, if we're going to go down that road, here's a bunch of criteria, give me an idea what that budget looks like. And they come back with a number, but in reality, that number's part of a range, right? Because, because that's the way it works. But as we look at it and we begin to understand, okay, you know, there are certain thresholds and triggers that will obligate you to then do more work, work you might not have set out to do, based on the amount of money that you're about to invest into the project, based on the square footage that's impacted by the repairs you're doing. So there's a variety of things, you know, this is multivariate calculus, right? And when you try to explain it to people, it's like, yes, I understand that when we said we're going to replace the heating and we're going to add air conditioning, that also means that in order to get that stuff to fit, we have to drop the ceilings. So now you're going from, and I'm making up numbers, you're going from a nine-and-a-half-foot ceiling to an eight-and-a-half-foot ceiling. Maybe that's not the end of the world. But you take enough of those things in concert with each other, and then pretty soon it's like, okay, how do we replace part of an electrical system? Right, the truth is, you don't. How do you replace part of a plumbing system? You don't, you know, a roof, everyone loves to talk about the roof, like, oh, man, just go up there and patch it, I could do it on a weekend. That's not how that works. Right, and if you were to say to that person, I love your enthusiasm, are you willing to warranty this thing for 20 years? Because that's what we're going to get. It's like, oh, well, you know, nobody told me that. So as I mentioned before, we've got a very capable team. We spent a lot of time vetting the people that we invited to be part of this, right? We have Skanska, who is our owner's project manager. We have Jones Witzit and associated with SMMA. These are very experienced people. These people have seen this movie over and over and over again. Now, there are certain things that we still have to study for ourselves, right? Because a rule of thumb is not a rule. But at the same time, it's very helpful to have people who do have experience in this that are able to say, look, I know we're going to study this, I'm going to shorthand it for you. Here's what's going to bite you. You don't see it, but it's there. And these are things we've tried to take seriously. So when we say, yes, the repair cost is upwards of $100 million, and that seems like a staggering number, right? That seems like if you went through that facility and replaced every single thing you saw, how could you spend that much money? Right, it's not possible. But actually, it is. You know, when people, when people question, you know, well, the state's only going to reimburse up to 375, and we're sitting at almost 800, something must be wrong. Like, no, nothing's wrong. This is the system that we applied to be a part of, right? There was never an intention, when they created the MSBA in 2004, they weren't looking to fully finance projects for communities. They knew that wouldn't be possible. They're trying to take money and spread it around, and because that's what they have to do, because that's their mandate, you end up with discrepancies like the one I just described, right? Now, are we in a period of unprecedented inflation, particularly in construction? Yes, we are. That's fact, but that's, that's the work I do every day. You know, so, you know, to counselor's point earlier, we're talking about big numbers, and it would have been terrific to do this 10 years ago, right? That would have been lovely, but that wasn't in our control, right? I'm sure council members understand how long we applied before we got in. And then even when you get in, we got in in '20. Here we are in fall of '23. We don't even know if we have a project yet, right? I mean, it's just when you sign up for the benefit, you also sign up for the duration, for the process, for the protocol. And it makes things challenging, and it sometimes feels like this is one of the things, if you're not sitting through it, if you're not dealing, you know, with these state agencies and trying to understand how all this stuff works and comes together, then when I tell you, yeah, we had to trade this document back and forth 11 times until we settled on the language, and it's like, what are you doing? Well, this is what we're faced with, right? We are poised to receive $63 million in state funding. I said the other day with my committee, it's like, you know, we all need to remember that, that's not state money that someone's doing us a favor. That's sales tax money, which means everybody in this room, everybody in this town is contributing towards that in one way or another. Instead, it's our turn, right? Long Meadow had their turn, Wilbraham had their turn, Westside, Amherst, Belcher Town, Springfield, Chicopee. We're finally here. I wish it was in a better economic situation, too. I really, you know, of course, I don't want to pay more taxes either, right? Nobody in this room does.
I think that's what we're all struggling with. Because yes, every town around us has gotten, either a new high school, a new middle school, a new elementary school, or maybe all three.
Yeah, or more than one. And unfortunately, timing, inflation, and frankly, the policies and formula funding of the MSBA, when it was originally set up almost 20 years ago in a completely different economy, we're going to get the same product as those communities and hopefully benefit significantly from it. But I don't want this to be said the wrong way, but, you know, we're going to pay it at a considerably higher premium, basically. And that, that is, I think.
That's fact, counselor.
What we're struggling with. Not saying that there's not merits to it. So kind of from my original question, so there was really no concern regarding the, or doubt about that the high school actually either needs a new building or at a minimum needs significant repairs? Like, there weren't people, citizens, let's take cost aside, it really, it seems like the big issue is cost. That's kind of what I'm trying to get at. Was there any other concerns about people doubting that it actually needs to be done? Well, yes, cost has been the, the largest single factor that I've heard in my discussions with the community. I would also offer, I've been part of some of the tours when people are seeing some of these things for the first time, and I can tell you without exaggeration, they've been horrified by some of the conditions in the existing building.
People that may have come in with skepticism that, are they, what they're actually saying on these PowerPoints and things, I mean, is that?
I can tell you.
Changed minds.
I can tell you a couple of families from teams that I'm involved in, in athletics, who would tease me because they're like, yeah, I know you're out there trying to just spend our tax money, you're trying to build this crazy building that nobody really needs or wants. Okay, come on out and see for yourself, right? Don't take my word for it. And then afterwards, after you get past the stunned silence, then it just becomes, I'm sorry, you were right. It's like, no, it's not about me being right. It's about, these are the conditions that we're staring at. So we can either do something about them or we cannot. And the challenge with not is what does that mean for the town? And I don't, I don't mean to go astray from what we're discussing, but I think it's relevant. Family four doors down from me just made arrangements to send their kid to Wilbraham Muntz. Whatever, no big deal. But the more you think about, you know, we have an opportunity in front of us. If we don't seize the opportunity, you know, next couple of years, probably nothing different. But what's going to happen when the state makes the bigger push for regionalization? It started under Baker, continuing under Healy, right? You see it with Public Safety Dispatch, you see it with emergency services, you're going to see more of it with schools, because there are a lot of times, 351 cities and towns, how many of them, once you get past like the top 10, are really able to go out and bond a big chunk of money so that they can have their own high school, that they're all, you know, whatever it may be? You know, that's a very real outcome. I'm not saying it's preordained, but I think we, we at least need to be aware of it, right? That could happen, and that could happen, you know, certainly in our lifetime. I've got two young kids in the schools right now, or, you know, youngish, eighth grade and fourth grade. I want, I want, I want the town that I live in to be as successful as it can be, right? To provide a great place to raise a family, a great place to retire, right? That there's, there's a lot of good, there's a number of wonderful things. When we decided to live here, right, that was the list we had. You know, probably not unlike a lot of people. But as we started to, you know, think through this whole thing, and my involvement in this project stemmed from, stemmed from my wife saying, when are you going to use your powers for good? You work for all these billionaires building these crazy things. How about something for us that we can all see and touch and be part of and benefit from, right? I mean, that's what led me here. So as I look at it, you know, to your original point, yeah, it's a big number. These are all big numbers. That's just the world we live in right now. If we could punt this for 10 years and then maybe things get better, that's a strategy. But history would tell us that it may flatten, doesn't go down. Not as a practical matter. This is where we are. This is our chance. We've waited a long time to get here, to get to this very point. So I, I hope that we would all be in agreement that, you know, we seize the day, right? Let's go.
But John, before you ask another question.
I just have two quick ones, I'm sorry, Ralph.
Well, okay, that's it.
I just was curious, is the 63 million that represents all MSBA, that's not other grants, other things, just 63 and MSBA?
Pure MSBA.
My other, kind of, after seeing all these presentations and things, the idea of having the pool be accessed by the town, I'm wondering how that would, I guess, happen? Because, you know, obviously during the day, you know, we're not going to have, you know, citizens going to the school at the same time. And then I'm, I'm guess, I'm curious, when would citizens be able to use a pool hypothetically?
So before you answer that, we're actually here talking about the bonding aspect of it. I think that question would be better served during the public forum session where you have all of the pictures and everything to show everything. Like I said, I'd like to try and concentrate more on what's on our agenda tonight, John.
Or similarly, open invitation to all of you. If you ever have questions or concerns, or you just want to talk something through relative to the project, reach out to me anytime. I'd be happy to take you through to the best of my ability, whatever it is that's catching your eye.
Thank you. And I will speak up and say you have been, you came to the Republican Town Committee meeting to speak.
Invited me back.
Coming back.
I had a bad night.
No, you do a wonderful job, you know, expressing the concerns and all, and we do appreciate it, and we know how hard it is, and know how many meetings you have. So just understand that, you know, we do understand that, and we know what it's like. Marilyn, you had a question?
Thanks, Ralph. Thank you, Steve, for this, for your service and everyone else. I've been in the back of the room for many of your meetings, I've been to your public meetings, so I know about who has access to the pool. But that being said, at the last public meeting, and this will be quick, at the last public meeting, I thought I remembered a request from a resident for a breakdown of the actual specifics of the 100-milligram, 100-million, I'm sorry, I'm a nurse, 100-million-dollar upgrade repair. And I've since been told it's on your website, the itemization of what that 100-million-dollar would mean. Now, why am I looking for that information? First of all, I can't find it. I've been looking, I can't find it, so I don't know where it is, and, but if it's there, maybe one of you can tell me. And if it's that hard for me to find it, maybe it needs to be in a more obvious place. But that being said, why am I looking for it? Because quite simply, we're in the throes of, very close to the vote, and the tension is ratcheting up, you know, we got to get the vote out, we have to pass. Well, I'm thinking, as a counselor, if it doesn't pass, what are we going to do on the next day? If it passes, we know what we're going to do on the next day, but we don't know what we're going to do on the next day. So I want to start visualizing all that encompasses what we need to think about in the event that this does not pass. And I know you hate to hear that, but we hear it a lot, you know, in discussion, people don't know. So is there a list of the, of the 100-million-dollar repair that I can look at to see, we're talking roof, air conditioning, what else is involved in that 100-million dollars?
There absolutely is.
Okay.
I'll tell you that with certainty. The fact that you're not able to find it?
Yeah.
It's problematic.
I, well, I went, I went to the website, you know, the picture of the school, I clicked, I went to all the things, I couldn't find it.
I can't answer it for you right now, why you can't find it, but I will certainly get together with my team and understand.
Don's looking for it right now, he's going to show me up, anyway, but how did he get there? I don't, thank you, Don.
Alan, what I'm saying.
That's all, that's all I wanted to say, but.
To your point, counselor, that is important information that everyone should have ready access to. It shouldn't be, you know, a fact-finding tour to dig out, where is it, you know, five folders deep. So I will look into that myself.
But he's already gone through a number of pages, I don't see it yet. I'm sorry.
Some of the FAQs, what would happen?
Well, you know, I think it should be more clearly located, but anyway, that is a main. Go ahead.
So I know, I know you guys have done a lot of discussions. I know, I know our middle schools are going to need some work done. I mean, I know there's been talk in the future to possibly combine Mountain View and Mapleshead, I believe, and I think this goes back a while. My concern going forwards with a 30-year bond is we still have other schools to do. And if we're paying on that bond for 30 years, I know in 10 or 12 years, we're going to be entering into MSBA again, asking them for the middle schools. we're going to be entering into MSBA again, asking them for the middle schools. And there's only so much threshold that you have with the $25 tax levy. And we can't wait 30 years for the middle school. I mean, we can't, let's face it.
And. Are you right?
And not only that, but there's also other projects in town that we can't wait. I mean, I had a tour at a police station and I was just devastated. I, I could not believe it was in the shape that it was in without us knowing about it. And I mean, there's other things. I drive by her DPW facility. I mean, we could go through. It looks like back in the sixties, we expended a lot of money between schools and all, all at once. And guess what? They're all coming do again at the same time. And that, that's part of my concern. And I think the concern is to look at the possibilities of a 20, 25, 30 and try and realize that, okay, yeah, I know it may be a little bit more hit right now, but that comes off, this one's going on and you're able to do multiple projects. And I'm assuming that the school building committee probably went through a lot of this. They probably had some of these discussions. I mean, that, that's one of the reasons why we're sitting here. I mean, we, we look at the difference between a 20 and 30 year bond in the school and you're talking $50 million in additional interest to extend it out to 30 years. And again, I understand where we're talking about 177.5 million is a lot of money. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of interest, but I look at it and I'm trying to calculate in my head going, man, for a hundred and something dollars more a year for an average house, is it worth saving that kind of money so that it can go to the next project? I, so again, I'm trying to put in perspective where we're thinking or where I'm thinking. I don't know what my fellow counselors are, are considering and thinking, but I think it's a concern and I think it's something where the council, who's vested with looking at all the finances of the town should be discussing this. And that's why we're here tonight to discuss it.
Counselor, I think it's a very fair concern. Like, you know, please don't get me wrong. I think, I think the, what you just described is absolutely, you know, a paramount issue for this board to be considering. At the same time, in my experience, I think the town will be better served making these kinds of decisions around bond duration, bond strategy, let's just call it, right? Because it's not just duration, right? So are we going to go competitive? Are we going to go negotiate it? Because that can have a meaningful effect on not only, you know, the rate you're paying, but some of the incidentals like the call value at nine years. Right? So there are a lot of things that need to be discussed and fully vetted. I'm just of the opinion, and I, at this, I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for my committee. I think the town will be best served having those discussions at the appropriate time. I think having them now and putting ourselves into potentially a corner, I think that endangers the project because I think the metric that everyone that, that I've come across is thinking about is the financial impact. And if we run the risk of the project being voted down because we're making a decision now about how we think we're going to finance it. You know, some counselor, you mentioned, what does plan B look like? Happens, does it go down? And I think about that every day. Right? And the reality would be if it gets voted down, MSBA gives you 60 days to re-vote if you think you can change the outcome. Obviously, depending on the margins, that may or may not be in the cards. But what they won't tell you is that if it does go down and we're separated from the program, it would be naive for any of us to think that there will not be an asterisk next to East Long Meadow, just like there is in Hollyoop. So when you apply again for another project, when you apply again for accelerated repair or a new project or whatever it might be, they're going to look at that and they're going to go, oh, you're the ones who got into the program after waiting seven years. And then you voted it down? After I matched you with a bunch of money to do the feasibility? I'm going to put you over here. Who's next? No one's going to say that out loud. That's not on a website somewhere, but I think that's the reality of human behavior. And for us to miss this opportunity, I, I think, I think it will be, I think that, I think the town, we're at a crossroads. We're trying to figure out, you know, who are we going to be? Are we going to be the place everybody wants to come to? Are we going to be the place that people are thinking about leaving? Because it's like, yeah, you know, it's great. My property taxes are still super high. And we're dealing with all these failing buildings. I don't know. I don't know what that looks like. I don't have a crystal ball either. You know, but it, but it seems like a meaningful consideration for this body as we think about, you know, what's the reality of doing this? You know?
Any questions? Connor?
No question.
Seriously, I'm disappointed, Connor. You had a whole write-up.
I have thoughts, but I don't have questions.
Connor, we're purple, just to match him.
So Steve, thank you. I appreciate.
I got a question.
You got a question?
So when are we actually required to determine the length of the bond? Like, when is that the deadline?
We issue the bonds.
That's right.
When is that?
So if we walk through what the approval looks like, let's say the vote approves it. We design a bunch of stuff, we're going out to bid for the bulk of the work next spring, so we can start next summer.
After the vote.
Oh, this, this is probably closer to the end of construction. This is.
Why are we sitting there?
So Matt, I'm going to answer that question very simply.
Okay.
If the council's considering a 20 year bond or a 25 year, the information that the citizens need is what's the projected taxes on here? Well, no, actually, because if they're saying and giving all numbers out for a 30 year and the council's thought and going forwards is for 25, then they'll be telling the taxpayers, let's say $1,100 is going to be the average impact when it could be 1250. So to get the most up to date, accurate information to the voters, but to make a decision is appropriate.
Thirty years, the higher bond, wouldn't it be more expensive bond? Wouldn't it be more responsible to use that number?
No, actually, it's a longer term bond, which means the impact to the voters is the least. So it's just like if you bond a car or lease a car for seven years, your payments are less. But if you lease it for three years, your payments are.
We're not required to determine today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So again, for public information, I don't think it's anyone's intent to mislead the public. And I don't want, I mean, you guys have been great. I think, I mean, as far back as I can remember, when the first numbers came out for the school, there was always a range. You know, the cost of the school, we're looking a range of 165 to 185 million, which means an impact from, let's say, 1100 to 1300. And, and you don't know the exact amount, and so you always give a range. And I'm looking to do the same thing, basically. You know what? If we do a 20 year bond, you're going to be looking about this. If we do a 30 year bond, you're going to be looking about this. But it gives the information to the taxpayer when they show up at the polls in November to do that. I mean, because I'm hearing some stupid things. I mean, I'm hearing that people have to show up to the polls with $2,000 in cash to start buying down the cost of the school. And it's like, what? I'm like, no, no, no. That's what I'm saying. And, and information gets out and it's, we've got to be centralized and say, going forwards, we feel as though this is the best path and this is what we're expecting for our cost to you.
Counselor, if I may, all basically, right? Based on what you just said, with all of which I agree with, perhaps a better way to address the the, the variation in potential cost impacts based simply on bond duration. Right? But that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about rates. We're not talking about anything else. We're not talking about construction costs.
You know, the rates actually play in. I mean, obviously, we know a 20 year bond has got a better interest rate than a 30 year, in most situations.
This is true, but our modeling is showing 5% for a 30 year bond and Hilltop just sold bonds yesterday at 4.02. So.
You're being conservative. Yeah. When they give us numbers, which is great.
Taking us for ourselves. But what I was going to suggest to you was, you know, perhaps, perhaps an alternative to, you know, trying to adopt a bonding duration right here, right now could be that as we go forward communicating to the community, perhaps that needs to go back to a range so that it will help to illustrate. We don't know what the bonding situation is going to look like when we get there, but we do know that it's very likely between here and here. And as such, the impact to, you know, our hypothetical average home taxpayer, the impact would be here to here. That way, we preserve our flexibility to be able to craft the best deal we can while also communicating, you know, to the voters. This isn't perfect, right? There are no point numbers. Everything's a range. Right? How much is a new car? I don't know. It's probably somewhere between here and here. Right? So maybe that's another way to achieve what you're looking for without necessarily, you know, putting ourselves into a box that we may someday decide we didn't want to be in.
Matt, so when is the actual terms of the bond determined? Not the council sentiment right now or the discussion, barring a vote. When is it actually supposed to be, could be determined? What is the range? It buzzwords it.
So, so typically, and I'm giving you quotes around typically, typically what would happen on a school project such as this? They just did this in Wakefield. Right? So they're going to issue what I called, you know, bond anticipatory notes, which is basically like an interest only payment. That gets you through construction. So our construction is going to start in '24. You're going to occupy the building in the fall of '26. You're going to spend the next year plus minus doing all the fields and demoing the old building and all that. So by the time you get to the end of all the work, let's say for fun, that's the fall of '27. So you've used bands to get you that far. And now you're, now at this point, I know how much I need precisely. So now at that point, when you're talking to your experts, you know, Hilltop, Locklord, who, you know, Kimberly Collins, whoever else, now we're able to say, all right, I know for sure how much I need. What do the markets look like right now? Is there an advantage to go long? Maybe there's not. Maybe there's an advantage to go short. Let's figure it out. Take it, you know, hit that when we can hit it, when we have the most information that we can assemble. And at that point, you know, everything you need to know. I know what the market looks like. I know how much I need. And now it's just a matter of working out the details. You know, and, and again, you have very good advisors. They'll be able to, you know, take you right through this in a much more sophisticated way than I'm giving you. And, you know, put you in a position where, all right, you know what? You've got a handful of good options. I used to have to pick one.
Well, yeah, I was surprised at how contentious this meeting was coming in, you know, even you could feel it in the room right now. It's kind of, you know, and I thought the whole time going through the process, it was 30, the school building committee had 30, it was 30. I was running the 30 number in my head and the 20 comes out and I understand we've run the 20 numbers and I understand, you know, Ralph, I understand your sentiments, but it seems that a lot of turns and points throughout the process of designing the school, there has been last second before deadlines, we come up with like Rue Goldberg-esque ideas to like save money. Whether it was, and with all due respect, Greg, shrinking the pool, the natriorium at the last pool building committee meeting to save was like 1.5 million. Or, oh, we're going to, you know, we don't have to put the central office in the final design of the high school if we buy the 382 North Main Street property. And it's last second and it's rushed. And it seems to me we're doing that again right now. And it's kind of like a harebrained, like this, this could be years from now. We, we, we could determine the bond with the numbers in front of us and we're just kind of like, oh, we're going to save money. So it, I see the numbers, but I'm, I'm not, I don't know. I just don't agree. I think we should do a maximum of 30 years. So that's where I'm at.
So I'm just going to point out harebrained savings. I, I take a little offense to that, especially when it comes to
Not savings.
Central offices and stuff, because that was brought up, what, back in February? And the schematic design's not even completed or anything yet.
No, deadline was in February, wasn't it?
No.
Deadline for, sorry.
Saying yes, yeah.
Putting this.
They had, the SBC had to make a decision so that the architects had to margin.
And I would. For that purpose.
And anytime you can look at savings, especially on a project this size. I mean, if, if you're saving a couple million dollars because you're lowering the amount of loan from 12 inches to eight, that's not a harebrained scenario. You know what? That's good.
Yeah, but it is four years from now. I'm like, we're going to do eight inches of loan instead of 12 inches of loan. It's, it's too early.
I think it's our. Sorry, before you start, I did see Connor's hand. As soon as we're done with a couple of questions, Connor.
Well, I'll wait to hear others. I'll save my comments for the end.
Okay, I will save my thoughts then.
So at this time, Steve, you're going to say thank you? I know.
All right. Thank you very much.
I appreciate.
If I can help any of you with understanding this thing better, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would ask Chris Solner, Jim Broderick and Don Starks to come up. I've asked them to be here tonight. In case anyone's unaware, Don Starks and Jim Broderick co-chaired the last Financial Oversight Committee. Chris Solner has been on the Board of Assessors for the town for, I can't even tell you how long. She's also been on the Finance Oversight Committee. Don Starks was on, I believe it was a bonding committee for the town under the town manager Denise Menard, looking at bonding for the town and bonding issues. So I would ask you to come up, have a seat. And we're going to ask you questions. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Denise, do we want each one to say their name and address for the record, please?
I'm Christine Solner, 26 year run terrace.
I'm Don Starks, 28 Elm Street.
Jim Broderick, 35 Brookhaven Drive.
So again, the reason I ask you is you've had extensive experience with the finances of the town. I've included you in with the paperwork that I've included for all the council. And the reason being is, like your thoughts on the different terms, the different bondings. And again, this is informational purposes for the council. I mean, expertise is always good.
We start?
Sure.
First of all, I want to recognize, and I have not prepared a statement, believe me, that you are the appropriating authority for the town. The span of the bond is yours alone to decide. It is not the purview of any other department. It is within your jurisdiction. Secondly, having served on the old appropriation committee, on the Financial Oversight Committee, we have been very cautious, extremely conservative perhaps, but still trying to meet and recommend for the needs of the town. We're trying to stay as far away from a $25 tax rate as we possibly can. Our neighbor in Long Meadow was at $24.24. We are also very familiar with all the projects that you mentioned, Mr. President. The Heritage Park project at $9 million, the need to expand our fire station because of cramped quarters. When that building was built, it was not a 24/7 full-time force. It was based mostly on volunteers. The inadequacy of our police station, I agree with you. And the continuing maintenance of our schools and our town buildings, we're cramped in the town hall. We're trying to find space. If we get close to $23 or $24, we're getting, we're going to be very. we're getting, we're going to be very close to twenty five dollars. Your budgeting is going to get so tight. There are going to be cuts down the road. Maybe not in three years, but maybe in four years, the squeeze will be on. That is, that is was some of some of my concerns. We've looked at the amortization tables. We noticed that you've been given three options by Hilltop Securities. They are bond counsel. They've given you options on thirty years, twenty five years and twenty years. There must be a reason for that. They're saying the financial health of health of the town relies on your vote. Not a matter of I think we do need a new school. But I think in the financing, you can certainly save money on the interest rate. It's ridiculous to spend sixteen million dollars for a pool. And this is my personal opinion. And go thirty years on the bonding and the final cost of that pool is thirty two million dollars. We need to, we need to trim those costs back. And I'm not agreeing necessarily to a twenty year bond or a twenty five year bond or a thirty year bond for the high school. But I think there are economies to be made. I think there's room for a compromise. And the compromise would be perhaps a twenty five year bond for the high school and a twenty year bond for the pool. With the twenty five year bond for the high school, I believe you would save about twenty five million dollars in interest payments. It's not that we're going to get that money back. It means it just makes it easier for the taxpayers. They're not dishing out that money for those projects unnecessarily. That's all I have to say, and I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Jim, Don.
I just have one comment and and uh it really stems from the conversation that you all have had just this evening. And uh and that is whether you have to vote a particular bond uh term tonight or not, or whether you can go to the towns at for the election and give them a range of it could be the tax rate of twenty years could be up to, you know, as high as, you know, the impact of a twenty year amortization, as low as the impact of a thirty year amortization, but to give yourself the flexibility to determine. I just not, I wasn't quite sure and I'm not uh familiar with all the ins and outs of the technicalities and legalities of what you have to do. But um, you know, it would seem that as long as the townspeople got a range of how bad it could be, how good it could be, and left you to decide as you got closer to what it was, you wouldn't necessarily mislead them. But you'd also be able to to decide at that time which way to approach it. I mean, clearly the shorter bond, the the just as we do with all our mortgages, you know, the the less interest we'll pay over time, but it is a long-term project. So uh I think perhaps, you know, if you're not forced to do something, you can get get by with a a range of of information for the townspeople to vote on without miscommunicating to them. That would be my only comment that based on what I heard tonight, that sounded like it made sense to me. So.
Don?
I don't have a whole lot to say except for I like, I think in macro, the macro picture. And when I look at the thirty year bond, and I see it's a quarter of a million dollar, I mean billion, excuse me. My jaw drops. My jaw drops on all of this. I also am very sensitive being a taxpayer myself to when I get that tax bill, how will it impact me on a day-to-day level? We do not have, um, not everyone is wealthy in this town. Most of us are middle class, even the wealthy, it hits, it will hit. So bear that in mind. Um, I do support Chris's um compromise. It does make sense to me on the natorium. Twenty years sounds reasonable, although they say it's an eighteen year. I'm not positive about this. Eighteen year life expectancy on the pool and we'd be paying twenty, but we all know we'll squeeze every last year out of everything because once we build a building, we are going to use it to the bitter end, especially when we're looking at um monies like this. And I'm very amenable to the twenty five year bond on the high school.
And I should have said I did support what Chris was recommending as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Twenty year.
Twenty five and twenty.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions? Connor, any?
No questions, but a bunch of thoughts.
Okay. Matt?
I'm good right now.
I greatly appreciate the information.
Okay.
So at this time, Connor, you have a bunch of thoughts. Would you like to share them with the council?
Yeah, in no particular order. I guess I'll start with sort of similar to Matt. I was surprised this was even really an item on the agenda. It kind of surprised me. I certainly have no problem like with the fact that we're having to discuss all the different financial possibilities, but it seems far too premature for at least me as a counselor to even make a decision about this when we're three years maybe away from even issuing them. I think if part of the motivation was to be able to provide to the public some better sense of what number they might be paying, that number, not because anyone's trying to hide anything. I think everyone's trying to be as transparent as possible throughout the whole process, but that magic number you give them is going to be incredibly misleading to every single person that sees it. Mostly because it's based around this average single-family home value, which is three hundred thirty nine thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. I can tell you in my neighborhood, there's not a home that's worth or assessed at less than four hundred fifty at this point. So just in my broad neighborhood alone, you're already one point three to one point five times more in the tax impact than what numbers we're throwing out there to members of the public. And that's not even the most expensive neighborhood in all of town. There's going to be people that are probably paying closer to two times that magic number. So I think trying to give people a broader range may help, but I don't think deciding a bond term length limit is really going to help people understand their tax implication for the next twenty to thirty years. No one obviously wants to pay more interest than we have to. I certainly don't. But at the same time, we also can't discount that, yes, we have other projects to do in town. But if we decided to go with twenty or twenty five years tonight or at our next meeting or anytime, less than when we actually need to issue the bonds, those projects are probably going to need to come to fruition shorter than twenty or thirty years from now. And so if you strap yourself to a higher payment because we're trying to save ourselves thirty million dollars in interest payments over a ten-year period at the end, we're probably not going to be able to take on that additional debt. Not because we couldn't from a legal standpoint, but people are not going to be able to say, oh, yeah, we'll pay twelve hundred dollars a year for high school, but ten years from now, let's take on another twelve hundred dollars to do another project. The more you stack all of those consecutively, you don't give yourself enough runway to do other projects. So I think a longer term could potentially, even though you pay more in interest in the end period, there would give you more project scope. Um, and then similarly, when I was on the master plan committee, an interesting metric that I think is relevant to this was surrounding communities that have done school projects like Long Meadow and Wilbraham. They have median incomes well over a hundred thousand dollars. So that means on average, people in that community are making over a hundred thousand dollars a year in their salary. And East Long Meadow, of course, the numbers have changed in the last five years since we did the study, but it was about eighty four to eighty six thousand. So for us to try to shorten a bond timeframe than what surrounded communities took on then, and people are making less money in our town compared to them, seems foolish.
John?
I want to hold my thoughts.
Marilyn?
I'm all set.
So part of my concern was again, um transparency. Steve, I I really like your thought as far as um putting a range out there and saying, you know what? You're probably looking between this and this. Um, as far as um having to vote on a term of the bond that really and I I know what the paperwork said that that really wasn't my intent tonight. So and if you read the the actual motion, it was, hey, the intent of the council is, and my thought was more to show what the cost could be. And I think by doing a range, I I don't know how the other council feels. But if a range of like a twenty to thirty year and say, okay, well, if we did a twenty year bond, you could be looking twelve hundred dollars or you could be looking thirteen or eleven hundred if we did a thirty year bond and give the range. I believe the range from what I've calculated on an average house is roughly about a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars. And I would be okay if the school building committee going forwards gave those ranges to keep the people informed on it and hold off on voting on a term until the bonding comes up. I mean, what what's everyone else's thought on it?
I was I was at um the building committee meeting yesterday and there was a rather lengthy discussion about us in the beginning of the meeting about our meeting.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Right. It started right out with our meeting Tuesday night and what was happening tomorrow when our agenda was discussed, trying to interpret what we were going to do. And um, you know, I think that whatever we do, it it's it's imperative to try to communicate as accurately as we can to the people what the impact is going to be. You know, I personally and nobody, I haven't said it publicly, but a a twenty year bond is too severe. It's too severe. I wouldn't consider a twenty year bond simply because of the impact on the taxpayer. I mean, the numbers are just too high. But at your meeting yesterday, there was discussion about we shouldn't have to vote this now. We can wait. You know, we don't want to do this now. They should wait. And then there was a woman named Helen on the the, is that, is she here?
Yes.
Where is she? Hi Helen. And she said, we need to know the number. We need to know so that we can accurately, because and I agree with that. If I'm a taxpayer thinking I'm going to be taxed twelve hundred dollars and then my first tax bill comes and it's almost three thousand dollars that extra. I don't want it to be that kind of a surprise for people. So I'm now struggling. What are we supposed to do? Because a representative, a very good representative of your, you know, your um project says we need to know. So the question is, does she still believe that we need to know what the bond number is going to be?
Helen, would you like to come up and?
Sure, if I may.
And I apologize for putting on the.
Sorry, name for the record.
Sure, Helen Fiantini. Uh, I'm an architect with S M M A.
Okay. And so we heard you and I heard you and that's why I was thinking, okay, at least we know. I mean, we don't know if the project's going to fail at twenty, twenty five or or thirty or pass at twenty five. Or, you know, I'm trying to say. So is it important for us to be more just have a better understanding what we probably will do?
It does help in communications. We're we're struggling and we're hearing a lot of feedback from people not knowledgeable about the project, struggling to understand what it is and what it costs. And yes, we are a hundred percent in agreement with everyone here. The numbers are staggering. I have never seen this before in my professional experience of twenty plus years. So. Everywhere across the state, we feel your pain. We really do. It does, most communities do um make a decision early on so that they know what information they're basing the numbers on. And really from very early stage, we've had uh citizens asking for what does it mean to me? What does it mean to me? If this body is not ready to make that decision, then we just have to be, we're going to have to spend more time in the range and explaining what a range is and making sure we have that data. The bond term is your is your purview, not ours. We were just simply reflecting um what we've seen most communities pursue because they're trying to get the project passed. I'm coming in with one project. You have many projects to deal with and we understand that. But it's clearer if you know going in. If you don't know, we can work with the range. We'll have to get very good at explaining the numbers to everyone. Um, and we can do that. That was, that was my thought. Sure.
Thank you. Um, to the council, I was just thinking based on go ahead.
Seventeen Stanton Avenue, South Hadley, Mass.
I mean, we had heard basically for the school project twenty five years. So we could narrow the range to twenty five and thirty year. And that way there, the range is closer if.
I think that's a, that's a smart move.
When this is just for the school. Not the discussion of the pool.
And and then it would be my on the pool to say, give a range between a twenty and a thirty year bond. Um, granted, the pool is a lot less expensive than the school. So even at that, I don't think there'd be a lot, but at least that way there, we narrow the ranges down and we're not giving people these huge ranges. And then basically set aside any vote tonight in just more direction. Kathy?
I would like to um propose a little tweak to your sentiment in that um the school building committee with S M M A and Skanska has done a remarkable job with the publicity that they've used at the four previous forums, public forums, another one coming next Thursday and the final one, October nineteenth. And they have the capacity to express all of this. And I think that's what Helen is is trying to get at. If you give us as clear thinking as possible, we can express that articulately and visually because they, I, we saw a mock-up of a pretty smart-looking brochure that is going to be available next Thursday. They can pump that information in there. As for what the council can should do, I highly recommend we take no action in terms of language tonight because we can trust the S B C professionals uh to do that. And and I say that because the M G L protects us through M S B A that the highest we can go is thirty. So doing that tonight is almost read a redundant move because we can't go higher than thirty. If these folks express it so that if there's, we will have the option when we have to, you know, call for an a note to set the range anywhere from twenty to thirty years. The council will make those decisions sometime uh when it's necessary to do so with the uh absolute input from our bond council. If I was hearing that for the first time and wasn't as close to this information as as I am, I would I would say, well, you know what? That may, that that's smart thinking. They're, they know they can go this high, but they also, if it's going to help us and the town as taxpayers, could go this low. But waiting and relying on the professionals in the investment world to tell us, you know, this is, these are the trends and but don't do it tonight. Do it when we have to take the money. To me, that's the best of both worlds.
I'm just think that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at.
So so the range?
Let the, let these folks advertise the range.
Twenty to thirty, it's going to be twenty five to thirty.
On the school.
Twenty is not.
I wouldn't even use those numbers. Let them give. I wouldn't even use those numbers. Let them give the example.
They need to know what our numbers are.
Well, they can do, but twenty, twenty-five, thirty, they have the capacity to mark that out with the matrix.
If we're not gonna do twenty years, do you?
Right.
Well, you don't, I, I would leave it there because there's the possibility that the pool, because it's a separate.
I'm not with the building, but.
I'm talking, oh, the building, yeah.
I think it seems like, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm reading the room wrong, but I think we're kind of ruling out twenty years.
Yeah.
I think the pool is a different conversation.
Keeps it close and just look at what it would be for twenty-five and what it would be for thirty and that's your range for the building. I mean, and again, from M S B A, they're very clear that your pool project is completely separate and we don't want.
Totally on our backs, not them. They don't want any, they don't.
And that's why if I, and I don't even know how much publicity based on the pool goes out, but if there is a range for the pool, at that point, I would say, look at the twenty to thirty for a range. But for the school, twenty-five and that way there, and again, I had the numbers, I mean, you're not talking, the range is very actually small. I think in the pool, it comes out to like ninety-six dollars for a range, so.
Does that help Helen? What what I said before to help you craft the media response?
And as far as waiting to vote on bonding and all, I agree.
Yeah. It's all hard in my mind to do that.
This is more direction than a solid vote.
But is the, so are we, what is like, what are, like, what are we agreeing to right now? There's no mechanism to enforce the twenty-five to thirty on the high school. Right? So it's just like an informal, like we're saying to them, oh, be twenty-five to thirty?
They're, as they publicize it.
As they publicize.
Like, is that?
But, so we're talking about.
So I'm, I go to the polls and I know, okay, well, if this school passes, my taxes are going up anywhere from X amount to X amount. If the pool passes, then I can expect an add-on of this amount or this amount based on what the bond investors tell us when it's time to get the money.
But is it like? And maybe I'm confused, but there's no formal twenty-five to thirty on the high school or we're not determining it tonight. So what's the? I mean, we don't even know what the makeup of the council will be when the bond is determined.
Very good point.
Any restrictions on even on them in advertising, I'm uncomfortable with that.
I think they're trying to advertise what like the range.
Theoretically, I mean.
Right now, it's only thirty years. It's right now.
But can't they do all three options?
They will.
No, you're saying.
And they should have been communicating.
I was saying that.
I, I get the reasoning, I agree with the twenty-five and thirty range, but to actually give that order seems a little bit toothless or like, I don't. Am I, so maybe I'm confused?
So the range, again, based on these numbers, twenty-five year would be three hundred and twenty-five dollars for a hundred thousand. A thirty year would be.
What is the, there's no like legislative mechanism behind giving them these numbers.
It's just our word, it's what.
Our word is like, we're saying to them in the audience, oh, go with twenty-five to thirty.
You're gonna give them twenty-five to thirty to throw out there, but like in three years, half of us might not even be here.
So.
So they can.
That's what I'm trying to say. It's not that I don't understand.
Well, that is just.
With that.
Right, right.
Informed the voter.
So.
There.
So let me jump it, Matt, with that being said.
Yeah.
They're going right now with only a thirty year, three hundred and ten dollars.
Yes.
That may be disingenuous too, because.
Oh, no, I agree, but I would be different in three years. Twenty-five, thirty and not twenty-five, thirty, right? I would do all the options that might happen.
Chris, I'll, I'll get to you in a second, but Connor was first and then John.
I. I feel.
And I think we should, sorry, I think we should do per hundred thousand.
Yes.
Instead of on the median price of a house.
It's easier to figure it out.
True, I suppose. I feel like if we do anything, it should either just be one number or just the minimum dash the maximum, not trying to split it out into three different buckets.
It's all in terms.
And I say that because we're also facing this point in time snapshot number off of what we think a projected interest rate of today is. But again, by the time three years from now goes around, people are still gonna be surprised at that bill because that number is going to change no matter what.
But that's part of the public, of the media presentation. And I think any consumer understands that, you know, if I, if that rate drops enough, I'm, we're going back and, you know, I lost my word there, we mortgage the house at the better rate.
I do like your thought. This number to this number is the range. And and don't do three, but with that being said, John.
My only, I think worry is just that, you know, that if if we were to do twenty-five to thirty, then the voters would know we'll never consider twenty, whereas if we kept it, if we kept it unclear and they and they said, well, twenty-five and thirty, but then in the back of their mind, they're all, they all might know, like, we could, three years from now, turn around and do a twenty year note. And then they're like, well, we didn't know you were gonna do a twenty year note. So I think ruling it out might help also with publicizing, in my opinion, but I do understand Kathy where you're coming from. I think this is gonna be good at a minimum, even if this conversation ends right now, that like, they know all of us collectively, it's either gonna be thirty or twenty-five. Just my worry.
Yeah.
There was a lot of discussion at the meeting yesterday about anything less than thirty, they were concerned about the risk of the voter supporting the project. And so, you know, and we're struggling and we will continue to struggle with the balance between, in my opinion, twenty-five and thirty. And there will be time in the future to be able to perhaps get a better handle on what's better for us based on the numbers that we're dealing with. If we advertise twenty to thirty, that twenty amount impact is gonna be higher and that may turn off some voters. And I don't, I don't want to do, I want to do something that's right for the town of East Long Meadow. I don't want to do something that's gonna somehow negatively impact the project. And if we know that we're not gonna go to the twenty year term, why even publicize it? Why even put it in in a range? Does that, does that make sense? I'm looking at you, Ralph.
No, I, where I'm getting lost is what is the outside of like our word right now, there's no, there's.
Are you pushing for a vote?
Well, it seems, I, I just don't know why it's not twenty to thirty. And why we're saying, oh, informally, it's gonna be twenty-five to thirty sort of to the room and they're supposed to like pick it up and then feder out that information. How it'll go, I'm, I'm, so is that, that's what we're doing? There's no, I understand we're skipping the vote, but I I'm, I guess I'm uncomfortable with picking the twenty-five and thirty informally, when theoretically it could be twenty when all says, and I wouldn't support the twenty, but it could be twenty.
Position could change of the council.
So this time, Chris, you had a question.
Yeah.
And I just, I'd like to recognize you.
Gotta come up here.
Yeah, and please come up to the mic, I'm sorry.
If you do put these numbers into a brochure, are you going to show the differences in the tax rates? And the impact on the tax rate for each project? And then are you going to show the interest savings overall for that? Because what happens if, for instance, the school and the pool combined for thirty years is three dollars and fifty-one cents on the rate. Twenty years is three dollars and seventy-eight cents. A taxpayer sees that, well, I'm gonna go for the lower rate. So it's kind of stacked. So how you present this is going to be very crucial. And I would remind you all that you are the leaders of the town. It is your decision. And, you know, it's fine for the building committee to put out a brochure, but I should think it would be under your oversight to see how it will impact the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know what, I don't know what the brochure that was designed up even.
It doesn't speak to any of that right now, correct?
So, yes, one of my questions.
It doesn't, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify. The brochure that we saw on screen yesterday doesn't have the ranges in there for twenty, twenty-five, thirty, whatever, for the number. We're, that's, I think, what Helen's getting at. Help us get ready for the forum. Give us parameters so we can advertise it correctly. Am I saying that properly?
Okay. We said twenty-five to thirty.
Right, they still have to work on it. Right, right.
So I'm assuming and Steve, if you can help, I'm assuming any advertising that you put out or some of the advertising you put out will have the impact to the voters.
Forward, I'm sure.
Okay. And well, I don't like to assume, so. So Matt, was your suggestion that we take a vote to say?
No, my, my question was, what is the, it was more lack of clarity on the process of what we were doing. So I understand now that you've you've addressed it. I.
Okay.
You're giving a sort of order on what to put on the brochures. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
That's Anna.
And.
Anna? Been very quiet.
Currently, the brochures don't have an amount.
No.
At all. And the whole point of all this is to get an amount on there. Some number.
Information out to the voters.
To be responsive to the whole community that up until this point, we weren't, we, the S B C, were not in a position to give you concrete enough information that we ought to be publicizing. But we're at that point in the process where we have locked in on the total number for the building, the total number for the school. And so now we can give you word finding again.
Direction.
Numerical figures to illustrate what your tax could roll out based on the length of the of the bond.
Okay. Does that help?
Does that help?
So. You know, no, 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 I mean, I totally respect everybody's opinion and everybody's insight. But I feel like as much as we sit here and discuss twenty, twenty-five, thirty, twelve, ten, a thousand, eleven, it's like this isn't, this decision isn't gonna be made for three years. You have no idea what the rates are gonna look like.
I mean, to give them a range just to.
No, right, right. So, right, but I mean, you could say, you know, I mean, today we could say, okay, we all agree on thirty at five percent and it could be like seven. And no, 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 I get what you're.
Well, what I'm saying, votes in November.
No, I know that.
Exclusion, so they have to.
Completely understand that. The people want to have some idea of what kind of. No, I get that, but I also get the fact that it could be a completely different number.
And they'll have that.
No, no, right, and that's, that's, you know, I'm sitting here thinking that, you know, we're having this big discussion and and I kind of feel like they, the school committee, I mean, I'm sorry, the building committee kind of, you know, went with thirty year and a number, and I feel like we're kind of making all this commotion when we could have just let them go with that number because either way, it's a, like a guesstimate, you know?
Well, that's exactly it, based on like best knowledge we have.
If we're going in this direction with a thirty year, whatever number you guys gave, and making all this commotion, and now we're just gonna be like, oh, whoa. We still don't have a number, but we're gonna give you, you know, a little bit. I don't know. It just seems a little silly, but I get, I get it, but it's, you know, it also seems like, why wouldn't we just let them go in that direction and then, because no matter what, it's gonna be different in three years.
But the, but the bond's available. Like, we'll still have the choice of twenty, twenty-five, thirty.
Right, 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 right. All the numbers are gonna change. The rates are gonna change, everything.
I think it's, the way I kind of have seen this conversation when this was first proposed a few days ago, is I think, you know, I think it's a good idea that we keep the range open because, but I think it was also good to have this discussion because we need to have good faith efforts that we're trying to save the taxpayers as much money as possible. We need to, we need to have a great building, but we also need to squeeze and save as much as we possibly can, even if it's a hundred thousand dollars there or a million dollars there, because it all adds up. Because ultimately, we're in the business of delivering the best services, the best buildings for the community with as little possible money being spent as possible. So, you know, I would, I would like people to realize or voters to realize that, you know, we may be able to save them potentially tens of millions of dollars in interest down the road, not making the decision right now, but keeping it open and knowing that they can think about that. Because some people might like that. I know a lot of people have said, you know, it's gonna hurt in the sense that people will see an immediate hit to their tax hike, but there might be potentially, because we don't know this, we haven't surveyed everybody, that there might be folks that like the thought that we're trying to cut out this interest, especially on the pool. Building is different. I think, especially on the pool, and that's been evident with some of the numbers that have been tossed around. So, but I, I, I agree, I think making it definitive right now, three years out, is, is a.
We're making definitive, the range.
Well, a bond amount, you know, there were twenty-five, like the.
We obviously can't go.
Can't go over twenty-five years, that's.
That's, okay.
That's already there.
Yeah.
The definitive is it's the maximum thirty, it could be what, twenty to thirty? I, I'm. So.
I don't want to deter us from the range. I think the range is a good idea, but I, I, you know what I mean? I don't mind the range, but I just feel like, again, like, they kind of had a range.
But ultimately, we, I mean, we're gonna set the range.
No, I know that. In three years.
Council will, maybe not us, but the county.
We're all gonna be gone.
And the other reality is, if they vote yes, which we hope they would, their tax bill isn't going up in two thousand and four. It's not gonna go up till early twenty twenty-seven or late twenty-six at the earliest.
I think we start paying right off.
Well, you put on, just on a ban, which is significantly.
And I mean, I sell the cash flow projection, but either way, so.
Very small, right.
If I can take a stab, if no one else wants any additional, what I would say is, I would make a motion that we direct the school building committee to advertise a range of twenty-five to thirty years for the cost of the high school and a range of twenty to thirty years for the nanatorium. And that's simply for advertisement to give the public a range of what the costs were.
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Order about that, though. I feel like we don't really have the authority to direct them to do anything.
Do you want to say recommend?
We can recommend, but.
For, it's just for.
Publish whatever number.
Did I miss recommend? Sorry. So I, I will adjust my motion to make a recommendation to the school building committee. And.
So moved with that.
And I'll second it.
Change in wording.
Any other discussion? Thank you. I think the word was supposed to be recommend, I apologize. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think making any directions regarding the bonds is confusing and superfluous at this moment, so I will be voting against this.
Any other? With that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Nope.
No.
And thank you, any opposed?
Recommend it, they don't have to listen to it, sorry.
Sorry, I have a question for our clerk. Because the nature of this vote goes to eventual appropriation of money, does this have to be a roll call and does it have to be super majority?
Motion doesn't have to do with appropriating money.
No.
Recommended.
Well, only a recommendation for advertising. And that being said, what I will do is draft a a statement from the council to the chairman of the school building committee, making a recommendation.
And Ralph, I think you wanted a roll call vote for every motion.
That's I did, I did ask for that. John?
Yes.
Connor?
No.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I am a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve, um, members of the financial oversight committee, Chris, thank you. I, I really appreciate the information and thank you for being here tonight. I know it's a Friday night. Um, thank you for everything. Okay. One.
All right.
Okay. Done. Okay, yes. So on our agenda, um, under number five and number six, the motions uh, or the agenda items, we're looking for an appropriation, um, an appropriation of funding. Um, today I was notified and you have in your packet an email that I received from Kim Collins.
Finister.
The finance director. Uh, I will read it into the record. Uh, Ralph, I have confirmed you will have one hundred and twenty days from the October twenty-fifth meeting with MSBA to appropriate and authorize debt. So if you choose to remove motions five and six tonight and then vote them along with the authorizations and contingencies uh, at the October meeting, that is fine. You can also choose to do the appropriation and authorization after the vote if that is more comfortable option for the town council. I hope this resolves all of the questions, Kim. Um, so part of my question to Kim, and I was asking for verification, is if we had to vote to appropriate, um, the cost of the school and the nanatorium before we knew what the, the town vote was. And I literally received this today, uh, three forty-eight P M. Um, and so I would suggest to the council that we table um, both agenda items, five and six, and we take them up at our November fourteenth meeting, once we know the direction of the town, on the debt exclusion.
Do you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move that we table items five and six, um, of our suggested motions addressing appropriation for the school building as well as the nanatorium um, to a future date.
And is there a second?
Second. I thought we said we discuss it November fourteenth.
Was there a date? I'm sorry, I didn't pick that. Okay, then I stand corrected, November fourteen. I meant my motion to table them until November fourteenth.
Secondary.
Okay, we had an amendment. Wait, do we have a vote now?
You adjusted.
Right, right.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Um, so is there any discussion on tabling just the appropriation of the money until after um, the town vote, which we've been notified, we have one hundred and twenty days from October twenty-fifth to make this vote?
What's the reasoning of delaying it? What changed from, and I'm not saying this to be like a gotcha or painting a ass. So what changed from when I received my packet, you know, two days ago to today at four P M? Um, like, why are we, you know, I'm not.
The email from Kim Collins at three forty-eight.
Just that we can wait.
Well, we also, um, were privy to an email from MSBA attorney um, suggesting that the council would be voting at their own risk on this if they chose to vote before the MSBA voted. And I'm not comfortable, and truthfully, I'm not comfortable voting on an appropriation for this sum of money until I know what the voters want us to do.
It should ultimately be a vote that's pro forma, once we know what the people.
Exactly.
So with that being said, this is a roll call vote. Are we voting on the amended? Or are we just voting on the total?
Well, do you accept the amendment?
You accepted the amendment.
Right, and it was. The total, right.
John.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Marilyn.
Yes.
I am a yes. Kathy.
Yes.
Matt.
I abstained.
And Anna.
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Moving right along.
Um, this is the approval of a special, uh, of a ballot question. So I am going to, uh, make a motion to approve that the town pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, uh, subsection K. I am.
You're right, you're right.
Okay. Uh, shall, shall seek voter approval at the next special town election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, to assess taxes in excess of the amount allowed pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, for the payment of principal and interest on bonds, notes or certificates of indebtedness issued by the town to pay costs of designing, constructing and equipping a new high school to be located at one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And to that end, the town clerk is hereby directed to place the following question on the ballot. Shall the town of East Long Meadow be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of designing, constructing and equipping a new high school to be located at one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto.
Race.
Everyone you guys want. So in essence, basically, under Mass General Law, we have to vote to add this question to a ballot.
Yes.
Um, any discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Anna.
Yes.
Matt, yes. Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
And John, thank you. Okay, item number eight is another ballot question. I make a motion to approve that the town pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, subsection K, shall seek voter approval at the next special town election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three to assess taxes in excess of the amount allowed pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, for the payment of the principal and interest on bonds, notes or certificates of indebtedness issued by the town to pay costs of designing, constructing and equipment, equipping a new nanatorium pool, a new nanatorium pool to be located at East Long Meadow High School, one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. And to that end, the town clerk is hereby directed to place the following question on the ballot. Shall the town of East Long Meadow be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for bonds issued in order to pay costs of designing, constructing and equipment, equipping a new nanatorium pool to be located at East Long Meadow High School, one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto.
Second.
Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote. John.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Marilyn.
Yes.
I am a yes. Kathy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
And Anna.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, number nine is to call a special election. Um, I make a motion to call a special election on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of two ballot questions for exemptions from provision, provisions of Proposition Two and a Half, in order to pay costs of designing, constructing and equipment, equipping a new high school and a new nanatorium to be located at one eighty Maple Street.
Second.
Beautiful. Having a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Anna.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a special town election and we have two ballot questions. And the next is I make a motion to approve in-person early voting for the November seventh, twenty twenty-three special election and established hours for in-person early voting as Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from nine A M to five P M. And Monday, October thirtieth through Friday, November third, eight A M to four P M.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, any deci, any discussion? If I remember right, the school out.
There's no school on November.
This is good for you guys.
So having the early voting hopefully will help. Um, I think early voting is always good. Um, with that being said, roll call vote. John.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Marilyn.
Yes.
I am a yes. Kathy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Um, we have no executive session. Anyone wanna sit around and chit chat, or is there a motion to adjourn?
I move my adjourns.
All those in favor? Or should I, yeah, it's adjourned.